And welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson. I'm Minneapolis City Council President. And typically before our meetings, we have the occasion to celebrate achievements in our community. And I'm joined this morning by Rob Spikings, who's the president-elect of the Minnesota Orchestra Friends Organization. And so, welcome, welcome. We have a resolution to be presented, that's a resolution of the mayor and the city council, celebrating Minnesota Orchestra Days. And of course, all of us have followed the controversy that's been revolving around the orchestra, and we're all very, very glad that the orchestra is back in business in a beautiful, new facility. And we would encourage everybody to take a look at this wonderful addition to our downtown. So be sure and be a patron of the orchestra. So I'm going to read the resolution, "Celebrating Minnesota Orchestra Days." And it says, "Whereas the Minnesota Orchestra, in its capacity as a foundational member of our city's society-building cultural community, works to promote Minneapolis as an exciting epicenter of the arts, helping promote, market, and brand Minneapolis and Orchestra Hall for the cultural and economic benefit of our community, making Minneapolis the destination of choice among music lovers. And whereas through its work, the Minnesota Orchestra is recognized as a world-class institution that engages the public with each season of extraordinary music, and together with the friends of the Minnesota Orchestra, creates and conducts musical education programs for young people, families, and adults to continually build existing and future audiences for the vibrant life of the city of Minneapolis. And whereas the Minnesota Orchestra's opening, Season Opening, A Grand New Beginning, concerts will be held in Minneapolis at the newly renovated Orchestra Hall from September 26th through 28th, 2014, bringing thousands of music lovers from around the region to Minneapolis, thereby allowing the city to showcase its preeminent place for all citizens to engage and enjoy the arts. And whereas the Minnesota Orchestra celebrates rebirth and reunion at Orchestra Hall with a full and varied season of classical, jazz, choral, holiday, and popular concerts, along with many community-based events that are planned as part of the 2014-2015 Minnesota Orchestra season. And the city desires to highlight its best features, including the lighting of the I-35W Memorial Bridge in the Minnesota Orchestra colors, blue and white, as a sign of welcome and support during the season opening. And so, there now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Minneapolis designate September 26th, which is my birthday actually, through the 28th, 2014, as Minnesota Orchestra Days in the city of Minneapolis. The city extends to the Minnesota Orchestra and all its audience members, musicians, management, patrons, donors, and staff best wishes for a successful, entertaining, productive, engaging, and enjoyable season." So this resolution is signed by the mayor, myself, and our city clerk. So would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you so much, councilperson and President Johnson, and to the entire council for recognizing the Minnesota Orchestra. We are indeed very excited at the rebirth and reunion of the Minnesota Orchestra here. I think it breathes great life into the city, and also, all of its educational programs, I think, are vital for the development of young people, as it impacted me when I was young in Minneapolis Public Schools. We want to invite you all to participate in the concerts throughout the season, but especially our opening weekends, September 26th, 27th, and 28th, where we will have the opening of the season. And there are many varied kinds of concerts, as President Johnson outlined, and we hope that you come, and we thank you very much for this recognition.
Well, thank you very much for joining us this morning, and we'll look forward to that lighting of the bridge. And I have to tell you, just this last week, my grandson, four-years-old, Eddie Piper, asked me to accompany the field trip to the orchestra. So I'll be going for a Kindergrazer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Breast Cancer Awareness Resolution. And I'm joined by my colleague, Councilmember Lisa Bender, from the 10th Ward in Minneapolis. I'll turn this over to her.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you so much for everyone who's here today, as we recognize October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and October 13th as Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day. This is a really personal issue to me. I was diagnosed with breast cancer four years ago. I was 32-years-old at the time, and I was 12 weeks pregnant with my first baby, so it's been a long road for my family, as it is for everyone who's impacted by this disease. But I'm really, you know, I think, I just wanted to share that, you know, that day, four-years ago, when I was diagnosed, if you would've told me that I would've had not one, but two healthy baby girls, and that I would get the chance to serve my community on the city council, I never would've believed it. And so, I really like to share that, that, you know, for me, there was a, you know, a full life after my diagnosis, especially thanks to the support that's out there from organizations like the American Cancer Society, the Hope for Two Network, which serves women who are diagnosed while they are pregnant, and the Young Survival Coalition, who helps young women diagnosed with breast cancer. So I'll read our resolution, and then I'll invite our friends from the American Cancer Society to share about an event that's coming up. So this is a resolution by the city of Minneapolis, recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day, whereas there are more than 3.1 million women in the United States living with a history of invasive breast cancer, and whereas this year, 3,820 women in Minnesota are expected to be diagnosed with breast cancer, and 620 to die from the disease, and whereas breast cancer ranks second as a cause of cancer death in women, and whereas breast cancer screening has been found to reduce breast cancer mortality when breast cancers are detected at an early stage, survival is 99%. And whereas since 2002, approximately 80% of Minnesota women, age 40%, had received a mammogram in the previous two years, and whereas only 46% of uninsured women in Minnesota received a recent mammogram in 2010. And whereas the uninsured, underinsured, and underserved are least likely to get screening for breast cancer, which means they are more likely to be diagnosed at a late stage when chances of survival drop to 24%. And whereas in Minnesota, non-Hispanic white women are at the greatest risk of being diagnosed with breast cancer, but African-American women are at the greatest risk of dying from breast cancer. And whereas the American Cancer Society recommends annual screening mammography for women aged 40 and older, and clinical breast exams every three years for women in their 20s and 30s, and whereas no effective breast cancer screening tool exists yet for women ages 40 or younger, and whereas women ages 15 to 54 die more frequently from breast cancer than any other cancer, and African-American women under the age of 35 die from breast cancer at three times the rate of white women, and whereas the federal government has invested more than $1.8 billion in breast cancer research since 2010, leading to the discovery of life-extending drugs, and whereas there is no cure for breast cancer. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of Minneapolis, that October 2014 is hereby declared to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Minneapolis, and that October 13th, 2014, is hereby declared to be Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day in the city of Minneapolis. Be it further resolved that the city requests to light the I-35W Memorial Bridge on October 1st in the color pink, and the Lowry Avenue Bridge on October 13th in the colors teal, green, and pink in honor of this declaration. And I'll just note that we are the first jurisdiction in the country to recognize October 13th as Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day this year, and I've been working with a group called Metaviver that is now launching a nationwide campaign to light up more spaces in their colors on that day. So with that, I'll turn it over to the American Cancer Society to tell us about Making Strides this year.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bender, my name is Kira Evans, and I'm a specialist for the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer here in the Twin Cities. On October 11th, we would love for all of you to join us in Lake Nacomis. Our walk starts at 9:00 a.m., and it's an opportunity for the American Cancer Society to highlight the work that we do in the breast cancer community. My colleague Todd Peterson is going to talk a little bit about some of the programs that we support through our donations and funding through the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer, but it allows us to highlight all of the work within the breast cancer community specifically, because we have some really great work that's going on.
Thank you. First of all, Councilmember Bender, thank you. Very sincere thank you for this. You shared a lot of meaningful statistics there. I want to share one more. Breast cancer death rates are down 34% in the last 20 years, and it's because of this kind of platform and this kind of voice that volunteers like you give this. So thank you. That's very, very meaningful. As Kira said, a lot of things happening in the cancer world and in the breast cancer world. In October, the Walk at Lake Nacomis, Making Strides Against Breast Cancer. Also later in October, a lobbying effort, a cancer research breakfast that we'd like to invite you to on October 28th, to lobby for increased cancer research funding at the federal level, the largest funder of cancer research in the nation. Do a lot of research here. We do a lot here in Minneapolis. We're very active in Minneapolis, in the Twin Cities, and beyond. Also, access to care is very meaningful if you're a cancer survivor. There's 3 million breast cancer survivors in the United States getting to treatment, getting to, close to where you can access care is very important, and we have all of those resources here, as well as several resources and information available at cancer.org. So visit us, share that information with someone close to you that might need it, and again, thank you so very much for this.
Thank you.
I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmisano.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Conno.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami is absent. President Johnson.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
We have a quorum present. Councilmember Worsami has family commitment, and so he won't be joining us today. The next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda, and there's actually a motion, I think, to amend the agenda.
I'll go ahead and move adoption.
Okay.
And also move to amend.
Okay. Why don't you read your amendment, then, Councilmember Glidden?
Is it mine?
Or it's on the agenda? Just this, just this right down there.
Okay. Thank you. I apologize. And this is a motion to amend the agenda to add, under resolutions, a resolution designating September 26th through 28th, 2014, as Minnesota Orchestra Days in the city of Minneapolis.
Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Then we have the agenda in front of us as amended. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the special meeting of August 27th, 2014, and the regular meeting of August 29th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have referral petitions and communications and reports of the city officers to proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have our regular committee reports, and the first is committee of the whole, and that committee is chaired by the council vice president, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item today, and it is passage of an ordinance amending Title 16, Chapter 420 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances relating to planning and development for the public housing authority. And this would be to amend provisions relating to the public housing authorities' transition to their own benefit plans and administrative services, and I'll move approval of that one item.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the committee of the whole report, which is one item. Any discussion on that? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm new to this council, and this relationship with the MPHA and the city of Minneapolis has been a longstanding relationship. It's been a relationship that spans, I believe, over 20 years. You know, at one point, the MPHA was a part of, I believe, CPED, or what used to be MCDAs. And, you know, my understanding of this situation from, you know, other councilmembers, but also from our attorneys, is that we need to get to the point where we can comply with the ACA, among other things, and that's why we're making this move. And so, with that understanding, that's why, you know, in essence, I mean, that's why I'm supportive of this. I mean, I don't have that sort of history that other folks on the council have, but, you know, I do want to make clear, if anybody from the MPHA is here, but, you know, I'm sure they're hearing me now, is that we still want to continue our good relationship with them, and, you know, especially in Ward 5, where we have, you know, a few public housing high-rises, we have folks who live in Section 8, we have other folks who are dependent on public housing, that, you know, in essence, I mean, this isn't a way of us souring that relationship. I mean, we want to continue that relationship, and in this situation, I think, I mean, the best-case scenario is that we comply with all laws that are out there for us, and that's why we have to make this split. And, you know, hopefully, it's just amicable, but I know that, you know, I've talked with the executive director there, Cora McCorvey, I've talked with, you know, other folks related to this, and, you know, it's probably going to strain the relationship a bit, and I feel bad for that. I mean, I think that in the best interest of the city, and also in the best interest of fiscal responsibility, this is a move that I feel needs to be made, and that's from all the information that I've gathered. But again, I do want to say for myself that, you know, being new to this, I just don't have that history that other folks might have, and so I, you know, have faith that we're making the right decision here.
Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just wanted to confirm as well that, and to Councilmember Yang's comments, that, first of all, this is not a severing of the relationship in totality. There are many of the provisions of the ordinance that still talk about commingling of different types of benefits and ways that we work together, and that will continue on into the future. Rather, the items that are changed with this ordinance amendment are primarily those that we are required to change due to federal and state requirements that have to do with how medical plans are administered. And so, thank you very much for that, Councilmember Yang, and I know that our relationship with MPHA is very important.
Any further discussion on the committee of the whole report? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Aye.
Aye. Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 12 items for our approval this morning. I'm going to ask to hold off on items 1 and 2 and move the remainder of the agenda. I'll note that the remainder of the agenda includes two fairly notable items, the Met Council's Housing Policy Plan, which our planning staff has done a good amount of commenting on. I think there's a lot of unanimity with regard to the comments, as well as item number 12, which is adopting the 2015 license fee schedule with no increase from the current 2014, which would be a third year of no increase in license fees, as we go through the process of making overall changes to our license fee process. So with that, I'll move items 3 through 12 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved items 3 through 12 on the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. Any comments on any of those items or changes? Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make a quick comment on item number 11. This relates to requirements that are currently in place that have our restaurants and bars specifically identifying genders for bathrooms, the single-stall bathrooms, the ones where you can go in, lock the door behind yourself. We've had businesses in our, in my ward, and I know in my colleagues' wards as well, that want to provide gender-neutral bathrooms, but have actually had this ordinance enforced on them and have been unable to do so. I just want to point out that this is a really great change that is good for our small businesses, it's good for anybody that's needlessly waited to use the restroom while one was available, but I think most importantly, it is good for our transgender residents and transgender people in our city who have faced harassment, gender policing, even threats when doing something as every day is trying to use a public restroom. So I'm really excited about giving businesses the choices to switch over, and as well, this resolution, which we will be voting on later in our agenda, which specifically encourages businesses to make the switch to gender-neutral, single-user restrooms. Thank you.
Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I also wanted to comment on item number 11, which was the restroom facilities ordinance. And first, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Johnson for moving this item forward and doing the groundwork with different departments to make this happen, but I know he also wants to join me in thanking the community for really bringing this issue forward. I wanted to recognize you're actually joined today by many members of our community. We have folks from out front. I want to actually especially call Roxanne Anderson, who I know was recently featured in an NPR article talking about organizing around transgender community issues, and that this is an issue that, as a full community, we need to take on and understand how we're welcoming to all members of our community. I really want to thank people for joining us today, and to also note that this is really one piece of a series of initiatives from the city that are part of what we have been calling our Transgender Issues Work Group. So the city of Minneapolis has made a formal commitment that we are working on issues of how we serve the transgender community, how we can understand better, how we can improve our services, how we can improve our communications, and we can improve our relationship with the transgender community. And this is very important to us at the city. I want to thank the community for engaging with us, and we actually have a very exciting event coming up on September 25th, which is a Trans Equity Summit. And I'll tell you, if you just like Google "Trans Equity Summit," it's going to come up. It's at the Humphrey Institute, and it's going to feature a great star performer, Angelica Ross, also as part of that, but more importantly, it's about engaging together with the community. And sometimes these issues come forward, I want to say too, because we have a particular champion. And in the city of Minneapolis, we do have a particular champion who brought forward these issues, who said the city needs to take a stronger leadership role, and that is Ms. Andrea Jenkins, who has worked at the city of Minneapolis for quite a long time, but, and she is a senior policy aide in the Ward Aide Office, but she's also a Bush Fellow. She is someone with a national profile who is working on issues of importance to the transgender community. So I want to thank you for being that champion, for bringing these issues forward for us to work on at the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, and I also wanted to speak on this item briefly. I really appreciate you coming forward and all the work and the comments that my colleagues have made. I did want to note that we had the public hearing at the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee, and it was excellent and very informative. It was well-organized, and it was clear that there's a larger need for rethinking the way we do restrooms in our city than we might have assumed. So we heard from a lot of people from a lot of different angles about why this is important, and we acknowledged, I think, that it could be important for people with young children, parents, people who are caring for their parents, and it struck me that while we're taking away kind of antiquated ordinance and a requirement we're placing on our businesses, maybe we also have to look at our own practices. And I started thinking about the libraries, the parks, City Hall, and realizing that we really don't have the kind of single-use bathroom accommodations that are going to be needed to meet the needs of all the people in our city, and so we need to be rethinking that. I know that the work group's focusing on that, at least looking at City Hall. I will note that temporarily, we do actually have a kind of a single-use, gender-neutral because of construction down on the first floor, and hopefully, we can make that part of the city and eventually have it more in our buildings, but also public buildings throughout Minneapolis. And if it's appropriate, I would be anxious and would want to co-author the resolution that comes at the end. I don't know whether I should mention that now, but I am anyway.
Any further discussion on these items on the Community Development Regulatory Services Report, items 3 through 12? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Aye.
Aye. Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Those items on the report are adopted. Back to items 1 and 2, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move item 2. The reason I pulled it off was because there were three authors, and I wanted to make sure they had the opportunity to speak to item number 2.
On item 2, is there any discussion? Councilmember Glidden.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and, you know, sometimes you have a really big item, and then it's, at the end, gets overshadowed by other big items, but this is actually an incredibly major policy change for the city of Minneapolis and how we regulate restaurants that serve alcohol. And for a long time, decades, Minneapolis, like I would say many, many other cities, has handled that regulation through requiring ratios that say you have to sell so much food, and you have to sell so much alcohol. And what we have discovered over time is that this is a manner of regulation that frankly just, A, doesn't make sense anymore in today's economic realities, and B, may not be the best way to regulate those businesses anyway. You know, it's actually pretty easy to set an inexpensive amount, let's call it, for alcohol if your concern is about overconsumption or other kinds of behaviors that relate to alcohol. The other kind of reality that we're seeing for restaurants, and we totally have just, I would call it a restaurant revolution, I think that coin was, that term was actually coined by David Brower in an article, restaurant revolution, it feels like, in Minneapolis. And a lot of these restaurants are serving locally-made craft beers or wines, and you have a glass of wine, and you have a dinner of some type. Already, you're almost at 50% on your glass of wine, too, maybe your burger, or whatever that is. And so, these regulations just aren't working. And so, what we're really seeing here is our staff at the city of Minneapolis, and I want to thank Grant Wilson, and Linda Roberts in particular, who have taken on this issue, who have worked incredibly hard to say, well, if we didn't have this traditional method of regulating businesses, what would we have? Because I will tell you, the community wants to know that, A, we're supporting our business community, but also we have a proper way to regulate those businesses so that we know businesses are being good neighbors. And for those of us who don't represent downtown, we have a lot of restaurants that may be right next to residential properties, which can be a good thing in that it's a great place to gather, but it can be sometimes a challenge in how do you manage commercial property that's right next to residential property. So I think what we have is a very, very good product, that I have to say, I think, will be taken and used as a model in other communities that are also seeing that this manner of regulating businesses is archaic, it's outdated, we need a different way to do it, and proud to have been able to move this forward with my colleagues, Councilmember Frye and Councilmember Palmisano. Councilmember Palmisano in particular has a lot of these, what we used to call the 70/30 restaurants, as I do in her ward. And one thing I will mention is that there is a ballot initiative that's moving forward this year, because for some of these restaurants, this is actually a regulation that's in our city charter, and that's for those who must sell 70% food to 30%, I mean, 70% food to 30% alcohol today. And so, you're going to see that measure coming up on the ballot later this year.
Any further discussion on item 2? Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to quick say that I really appreciate the work and the leadership of councilmembers Palmisano, Frye, and Glidden on this issue. You know, I'm a home brewer myself, and a-
You know, I'm a home brewer myself and a fan of craft beers, and I'll tell you, they're more money than a less expensive watered-down can of beer that's been trucked in from 2,500 miles away. We have some really incredible brewers and companies in the Twin Cities that are making this craft beer, and by removing this regulation, we're really enabling those companies to succeed through our restaurants, and that's local jobs here. And I don't know that that message has been recognized enough that this work is creating local jobs in Minneapolis, in the Twin Cities. And so I really want to thank my colleagues for this change, and I really challenge the perception too. I think that we have a body up here that sometimes, you know, people look at it, well, 12 out of 13 of us are DFLers, and I think sometimes people think, well, that means a lot of regulation, but I've seen over and over again, this council really work to create common sense regulation for businesses. So I just want to cite that and challenge that perception. Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and I also appreciate all the work that went into this. I wanted to note that I was excited about the, we had a certified alcohol manager provision that had been an earlier version, and I actually strongly supported that. It lines up well with our food code ordinances requiring a food manager who's got some certification to actually oversee that. I'm still going to support it even though that's gone. I know there are provisions for alcohol server training, and I have to say, a lot of the provisions are the same kind of provisions that we fought hard to get put in as conditions of many of the licenses that we've been granting around the university area where I represent. I will say that this change, people are nervous about this change. There were people, I think, that unrealistically thought that the ratio offered some reassurances and some protections about over-serving, serving minors, turning a restaurant into a bar. There is some pressure in some of the businesses in some areas of the city, especially activity centers like Stadium Village over in the university area, probably Dinky Town as well, where there are ongoing issues about over-serving and alcohol and those kinds of things. But I think we've built protections over time in the way that we can regulate these, in fact, our ability even to withdraw license now if somebody violates enough of the regulations and the conditions, and I think this makes much more sense. And I intend to be working with my neighborhood and my community and bringing out this. In fact, we've been asked, the Ward Office has been asked to do a presentation at the Prospect Park Neighborhood Group, where they've certainly been dealing with this issue for a long time, but I'm going to vote for it, and I'm going to be willing to defend my vote and explain it, and then I'm going to challenge all the restaurants and all the bars and all the city regulators to prove how this is actually going to be better, and we're going to end up with less issues and fewer problems.
Any further discussion on item two? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That item is adopted. Back to item one then, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number one is the downtown East Block One development rights and sale terms. This item was moved out of this committee without recommendation, so I'm going to ask Councilmember Frye, who has a motion to take over from here.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman, Madam President. There, this, the present term sheet here by Ryan, and just to give a little bit of summary as to where we're at and why we're here, this is in regards to Block One, which is the parking ramp just adjacent to the Vikings Stadium. We issued an RFP several months ago for that, for the liner parcel as well as the air rights. Two parties responded, one of them was Ryan, one of them was Mortenson. Ryan ultimately won the bid for a figure of 5.6 million for a hotel as well as residential. That deal changed. It changed for several different reasons, one of which is the parking. Parking had a whole lot to do with it, the inflow and outflow, ingress and egress, the 200 additional stalls, as well as construction costs generally. There's no dispute there, that deal did change. And since then, we've been, we've undergone substantial negotiation with Ryan, and the deal has changed in a positive way since then. We got an additional $1 million, it was down to two, it then went up to three. Initially, it was at 70% occupancy is when we would start receiving that million, now it's at certificate of occupancy. We also had a substantial change in terms of the buyback option. There was a very large concern that Ryan would be able to hold on to that particular parcel for about seven years, land bank, not build anything, and the property taxes generated from that parcel would be very low. Buyback option, in fact, two buyback options are now added into the term sheet, the first of which is triggered by a positive approval by Vikings and MSFA of the additional 200 spaces, and the second, which is triggered on December of 2015. So in the event that a building is not put there in the very near term, then we have the ability to take the parcel back, reissue an RFP, and go on from there. At the CD RS meeting, I'm sorry, at the COW meeting just a couple of days ago, Councilmember Goodman pointed out yet another important piece that had been overlooked, which was involving the amenity deck atop the parking structure. The concern was, so just to give a little explanation of what's happening here, about 2/3 of the top of that parcel will be used for the proposed development for an amenity deck with Magellan and Ryan. So 2/3 of it is used by Magellan and Ryan with their, along with their current residences. The remaining 1/3, it remains to be seen what happens with it. We have received a letter from Ryan, which I believe has just been passed out, that provides some explanation, and the basic explanation is this, the chances of an amenity deck going in that remaining 1/3 are slim to none, given that they would need to add a whole bunch of stairwells, elevator shafts, they would lose the additional parking revenue for probably nine or 10 months, resulting from the design time that it would take to design and then construct and reinforce the new elements of this ramp. So it would cost a lot of money, it would be difficult to do this amenity deck. Yet, in the event that an amenity deck is put there, we, the city, didn't want to lose out on the money resulting from that sale. So right now, and I'll just read some of the final paragraph from Ryan, so it says, "As you can clearly see, at this time, we consider the addition of a team amenity deck incredibly unlikely. In consideration of the city's concerns, however, Ryan Company agrees that in the unlikely event, an amenity deck is proposed by the Vikings as part of the construction of Block One ramp and agreed to by the MSFA, the ramp owner, Ryan Companies, the initial ramp operator, and the city of Minneapolis via project approvals, Ryan agrees to share equitably with the city any net profits." So in the future, if we go down that route and an amenity deck is proposed for that final remaining 1/3, we, the city, will get half the revenue. That's what we're looking at. So the move, the first motion that I have is I will move to substitute the amended term sheet for the original term sheet referenced in the report. So this is just making sure that we're replacing the original term sheet, which is not as good, that does not have the buyback option with the new term sheet. And I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, or if that's Madam President's job, I will have her, I'll ask her to do that.
Councilmember Frye has moved to substitute the current term sheet to the item that came out of Community Development Regulatory Services. Any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me just get clarification on this. We're talking about original term sheets and this new term sheet. The term sheet that we saw at COW on Wednesday, I mean, that's the term sheet that we're talking about, right?
Councilmember Yang, Madam President, yes, that is the term sheet that we were talking about. The, that term sheet that you saw on COW on Wednesday, however, Chan changed from the term sheet that we saw in Community Development Regulatory Services the previous Tuesday.
And so the term sheet that we're working with, I mean, from this motion, is the term sheet that we saw at COW, right, on Wednesday?
Uh, Madam President.
There hasn't been any change to that then, right?
That is correct. There have been no changes to the term sheet, however, there has been an additional letter that I believe you've received that highlights the differences with the amenity deck.
Okay.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. So I appreciate this. I'm reluctantly working to get to consent to the new term sheet. It does, this has certainly taken some bumps. It's very disappointing that we're coming back with a different proposal than we thought we were agreeing to when we approved the RFP, and I don't think that's a good way to operate. I think our other alternative is to go out for another RFP. I do think that is viable. Certainly, we heard lots of concerns about that yesterday at Committee for the Hall, and they resonated with me. If we have a letter now about the amenity deck, I don't understand why we can't add that provision and why that provision hasn't been added to the amended term sheet. So we have kind of a soft letter with a signature from a vice president, but yet, nothing's in the term sheet about sharing the profits from the amenity deck, and so it looks like it's not really a term that we're agreeing to. I appreciate, the point is, I guess, we've got a good indication that they're going to do that, but why then isn't, but don't we put that into the new term sheet? I don't have an amendment prepared or written to do so at this time, but my thought is that would sure make sense maybe to do that if we wanted to say, that sounds good, that's a little bit better, let's put it in part, into the package. Another option would be, well, why don't we just then hold this and get that into a term sheet and talk to them about it further and bring it back next cycle and agree to that. But I know that lots of people think even waiting the cycle is just going to do so much damage to the project, we're not willing to do that. But I would at least put those two ideas on the table for us all to consider together. Could we amend it to include sharing profits from the amenity deck, or could we postpone this to make sure that we can also get that in there without making any motions?
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I'd like to just ask a question of Councilmember Frye. I mean, would it be appropriate to just incorporate the letter into the term sheet as an amendment just so that, you know, to Councilmember Gordon's points, I mean, so that it becomes binding?
Councilmember Yang, excuse me, Councilmember Frye.
Madam President, in response to both Councilmember Yang and Councilmember Gordon's questions, you raise a good point. What I would say first off, the reason that we initially did not put it in the term sheet is that the viability of having an amenity deck there was so tenuous that we thought that it would be not a good result to signal that this is going to happen. It would put some tangible value on the property itself. We did consider that. However, I agree entirely with you, we do want to make sure that the net profits shared from any sale will be binding, and in this case, I would actually ask our attorney, Susan Siegel, if there's any legal difference in having it in the term sheet versus having it in the letter agreement. I mean, I know that the term sheet, as we've seen before, terms sheet has changed as well. So just in terms of what would be legally binding, I'm not adverse to adding, I'm not, but I wanted to call in Councilmember, I mean, Attorney Siegel.
Ms. Siegel.
Madam Chair and Councilmember Frye, the council's action before it is to authorize staff to negotiate an agreement with Ryan Construction according to the terms in the term sheet. And so with items that are not in the term sheet, it would be within staff's discretion, I suppose, albeit the council could issue a staff direction to us that we make sure that this is part of the proposal, and I would see that as being the legal difference.
Frye?
Ms. Siegel, would we be able to issue a staff direction, and would that require a vote to include this, the equitable sharing of any profits from the amenity deck in the final agreement?
Madam Chair and Councilmember Frye, yes. The council could vote to direct staff to make sure that there is a provision related to profit sharing and whatever other guidance you wanted to provide to staff, and I would view that as, albeit not a negotiated term, but it certainly would give us clear direction on what our authority was in negotiating an agreement such that if there was not a provision along, consistent with the staff direction, we would feel obligated as staff to bring it back to the council before any final agreement was signed with Ryan Construction on the project.
Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would ask that you consider moving the substitute, so I can amend it, to add a provision with regard to this amenity deck. And I will state, although I don't have it in writing, it will read something like this, that if an amenity deck is added for Viking, for the Vikings or game days, the city will split any revenue generated above and beyond the cost to build.
So you're suggesting that we act on the motion to substitute first, and then you'll amend?
Yeah, I want to get Councilmember Frye's motion in front of us. I don't want to amend what we're not going to substitute.
Yep, okay, so we have a motion to substitute in front of us. Any discussion on the motion to substitute, which is putting the new term sheet in front of us? All in approval, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Councilmember Goodman.
To address the concerns that we've now heard, I'm going to move to substitute, or to amend the substitute in front of us to read, "If an amenity deck is added for the Vikings or game days, the city will split equally any revenue generated above and beyond the cost to build."
Did clerk get Councilmember Goodman's language?
Madam President, what I was able to capture is the amendment from Goodman. If an amenity deck is added for the Vikings or game days, the city will split equally any revenue above and beyond the cost to build.
I'd like to speak to my amendment.
Okay, go ahead.
Building amenity deck is going to be really expensive. Can you even imagine how this would work, where you'd have an apartment building with parking, and then you'd have those people who have their own amenity deck, and then you'd have something completely separate or immediately adjacent to it that'd have to be ingress and egress and elevators and ADA accessible? It would be a very expensive endeavor. But should the Vikings really want this amenity deck, and we like that idea, and I think the Sports Facilities Commission likes that idea too, they would perhaps probably have to pay for the cost to put it there, and there might be an air right that they would have to pay, a fee to Ryan. My concern is that we then share in that fee if there is one. I don't like the idea of selling the rights and then having them sell the rights above and beyond that. So I think that kind of takes into consideration Councilmember Gordon and Councilmember Yang's concerns with regard to this, but I want to be clear that I share Councilmember Frye's point that this will be a difficult and expensive thing to build, and that's why I was okay with it just being in a letter, but I'm better with it being as part of the term sheet.
Councilmember Glidden has a technical amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and since we do have a council rule about amendments in writing, I think we would, oh, you have an.
Well, we don't have it though, so let's just do it. I think this makes sense.
So I think what I was going to move is that we vote, since the clerk has recorded your motion, that we can accept this motion to wa, I guess the motion is to waive our rule for this, for this item.
Councilmember Glidden has moved to waive the rule about a written amendment. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. So back to Councilmember Goodman's amendment. Councilmember Gordon.
I certainly support the amendment. I was just going to request if the clerk could even email it electronically to us, then we could at least have the written amendment before us in that form, and if that's convenient. I'd like suspending the rules better with that, and most of that is just so we don't set some precedent, because this can get, it really helps me to have something written in front of me, so I appreciate that. But I will definitely support this, this is exactly the idea that I was talking about.
Councilmember Frye?
Madam President, I am fine with this amendment.
Then on Councilmember Goodman's amendment, all in approval, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. So we have in front of us the term sheet, that is the amended term sheet, amended several times now. Any further discussion on that item? Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. I did, I just want to.
I did, I just want to take a moment, because this has been a long process, and I just wanted to demonstrate the importance of this development. This is a transformative development that's occurred and is occurring and will continue to occur, additional development around the stadium and the greater downtown east area. And I think it's really a demonstration of a lot of collaboration between multiple jurisdictions as well as partners and the Neighborhood Association to make this come about. And so I just wanted to acknowledge and thank the efforts of Councilmember Fry and Councilmember Goodman, and of course, a variety of staff in our CPED department and our finance department. They've done a remarkable job pulling together in short order what I think is a term sheet that reduces our risk and preserves our interest, which is really about the financing of the parking garage. It generated a much better deal that addresses our financial interests in the short term as well as in the long term with the additional property tax revenues that will be generated through this development, and addresses our interests in the timing of the development. We want to build something as big as we can, as fast as we can, to generate these benefits for the city. So I just wanted to remind folks that there's no city money in this development. This is all a benefit to what we're doing, and I think the parties involved have struck a very positive deal and wanted to acknowledge all the work that went into that, and I'd be supporting this motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk will call the roll, and we are on item A. Is that correct? Councilmember Fry, are you going to move B separately?
Correct. This is simply substituting the term sheet, and then the next vote would be to approve the term sheet.
All right. On item A, Clerk will call the roll.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That item is adopted. On item B, Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Madam President. I will move to approve the substitute term sheet with Ryan Companies and authorize appropriate city officials to execute a purchase option development contract with Ryan or an affiliate and the Minnesota Sports Facilities Authority and other agreements consistent with the term sheet.
Councilmember Fry has moved item B under, excuse me, letter B under item one. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I received a decent amount of communication about this issue, so just wanted to briefly state why I support this. This is part of a much bigger investment, as Councilmember Quincy outlined, that the city has already made. And at this point, to me, this deal is clearly in the best financial interest of the city as we work to recuperate the investment that we have made in downtown east. So I'll be supporting this today.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I have to say to folks, I mean, these are very complicated deals that just, in a lot of ways, I mean, were done way before the seven of us came here. And, you know, to echo what Councilmember Quincy touched about, I want to especially recognize Councilmember Fry and Councilmember Goodman for their hard work, our staff for their hard work in getting some of this complicated stuff done. I mean, for a person like myself who has come in, you know, a little bit later than when the RFPs were thrown out there and approved, it just seems like a lot of this stuff is just, you know, complicated stuff. But, you know, I've been following this issue, and I've, I think, I mean, in this situation for us, it's our way of just trying to, you know, I mean, take care of a situation that needs to be taken care of at this point. And so with that being said, I mean, I'm supportive of this.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll on item one B.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the committee report from Election and Rules, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Madam President. We have only one item on the agenda, which is to approve the additional hours of operation for no-excuse absentee voting, both during the week and two additional Sundays as well.
Councilmember Fry has moved the Election and Rules report. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy. President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Health, Energy and Community Engagement with that committee's chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health, Environment and Community Engagement Committee is bringing one item forward. It is about the school-based clinic services, authorizing a contract with the Minneapolis Public Schools to accept estimated revenue in the amount of $3,900 for mental health services and sports physicals at our school-based clinics. I will move that item forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment and Community Engagement report. Anyone want to discuss that item? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Transportation and Public Works with that committee's chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee will be forwarding 13 items today. Item one is the Downtown Business Improvement Special District Resolution approving the services, cost estimates and charges, and list of services for the 2015 Downtown Business Improvement Special Service District. Item two is the Resolution approving special services, cost estimates and charges for the Bloomington Lake, Chicago Lake, East Lake, Lindale Lake and 54th and Lindale Special Service Districts, and those are 528A districts. And then item three is the passage of resolutions and actions of the same for the West Broadway Improvement Special Service District, and that is a self-governing district. Item four is the LaSalle Avenue Street Reconstruction Project, approved project layout, reconstruction of LaSalle from 12th to 8th Street South, and authorized Public Works to negotiate with private property owners to acquire easements and additional right of way as necessary. Item five is authorized execution of agreement with Sebaston Incorporated for Electrical Engineering Services with two electrical improvement projects for the Fridley Water Treatment Campus. Item six is an item that, as mentioned earlier, will be amended. It's approved the comments and direct staff to submit comments with the Metropolitan Council by the end of the 45-day comment period, and the amendment, which was distributed, is to include a passage of a resolution submitted with the comments to the Metropolitan Council in support of the Nicklet Modern, Central Modern Streetcar Project. And basically, that's a series of statements of previous actions we've taken with clarification that Metropolitan Council wanted from us in regards to the financing of it. Item seven is the Hennepin-Lindale Corridor Reconstruction Project, approved project layout for the reconstruction of that corridor between Franklin Avenue West and Dunwoody Boulevard. The following items refer to the Ways and Means Committee, passage of resolution adopting the levying, special assessments for operation and maintenance charges at 50th Street West and France Avenue South parking facility, and this will be amended as distributed for decreasing the total assessment by $4,189.91 due to the removal of a duplicate expense cost. And so that is the amendment for that item. And then item nine is passage of resolution ordering the work to proceed for the East Street South Street Reconstruction Project, sign the assessments and resolution ordering the abandonment and removal of airways located in the public right of way in conflict with the project. Item 10 is the 8th Street Lighting Project, ordering the work to proceed as adopted for the special assessments, and requesting board estimate taxation to authorize the city's issuance of the sale of the assessment bonds for that project. Item 11 is the authorized execution of amendment with the support and partnering agreement with the Metropolitan Council, environmental services, increasing the maximum reimbursement amount to the city for the additional work completed by Public Works. Item 12 is authorized repair of sidewalk panel, curb, gutter damage caused by the June 14, 2014 storms without assessing abutting properties, and a resolution supporting the replacement of sidewalks, curbs and gutters damaged by storms and other natural disasters at no expense to the abutting property owners. And the final items are accept low responsive bid of Tera General Contract LLC for the High Watham Maintenance Facility, liquid AC tank, low bid for the PCI Road for 10th Avenue South Storm Tunnel Replacements Phase III, and accept low bid of Zoll Petroleum Maintenance for the abandonment of underground fuel storage tanks. I'll move all 13 items with six and eight as amended.
Councilmember Reich has moved all of the items on the Transportation and Public Works Report, and items six and eight as amended in front of you. Any discussion on the report? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report with that committee's chair, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means will have 29 items for your consideration this morning. The first item are a series of legal settlements. Item number two is executing amendment to a contract with Thompson Reuters for Westlaw and Legal Research Services. Third item is executing an amendment to the contract with Bar Engineering related to for the city's attorney's office to contract for expert consulting services. The fourth item is accepting a grant from the Energy Foundation. Fifth item is acceptance of grant from McKnight Foundation to support the implementation of Minneapolis Commercial Building Energy Rating and Disclosure Ordinance. The next item is the execution of several contracts with the state of Minnesota to operate air quality monitoring stations. Seventh item is the executing of First Amendment to the lease agreement with Freud Holding, extending office-based lease in the Mill Quarter Ramp for five years. The next is the execution of a three-year contract with Jones Lang LaSalle to serve as our real estate and brokerage services broker. There's an execution of a contract with Sprint Spectrum, that's a hard one, for portable cell tower installation, executing a contract license agreement with FSP 50 South 10th Street Corporation for the Ucare Skyway Senior Center, also executing amendments to contracts with Alpha Review Corporation for medical review billing services, passage of a resolution approving an appropriation increase, the amount of $1,376,000 to the Department of Finance for completion of the project for the traffic maintenance building renovation. There's a passage of a resolution for some travel donation. The next item is the execution of a 10-year license and power agreement with Excel Energy for not to exceed of $347,500 over a 10-year period for installation of public safety cameras in Minneapolis. We also have the 15th item, which is executing amendment to a contract with Bentley Systems for licensed subscription services, ELS, executing an amendment to a contract with Computer Sciences Corporation for Risk Management Information and Claims Processing Systems, amendment to a contract with Hub Systems for mobile data computer support and maintenance. There's an IT master contract program, execution of several amendments for those master contract suppliers, execution of an amendment to a contract with STAR LIMS to extend through 2016 for maintenance and support of the lab information management system for the police department's crime lab. We also have the 20th item on the agenda, which is the execution of contracts with two vendors for the $85,000 each to provide equipment, service and video storage for the test and evaluation of the body cameras worn by police officers through, and this test is going through September 30th of 2015. The execution of amendment to a contract with Dunking Parking Systems is for citation services, or system services, excuse me. We also have from the Office of Emergency Management and Preparedness Services, executing a three-year master contract with a variety of contractors. Next item would be the execution of amendment with Horseman, Inc. for boarding of the mounted patrol horse boarding services, executing of agreement with the Fourth Judicial District Court, as well as a match of $10,900 for participation in the Adult DWI Court Grant. We have the execution of a contract with Dynamic Imaging Systems for photo imaging equipment, execution of a three-year lease with Blue Sky Veterinary Services at the Minneapolis Animal Care and Control Facility, and the new appointed position from the Executive Committee was for the Director of Business Administration of Public Works, and that position met that criteria, and asking for your approval of that. And the final item is the execution of a contract in $1,549.50 for space rental at the Humphrey School of Public Affairs, University of Minnesota, to host the event for reviewing issues facing the transgender community as part of the Minneapolis Trans Equity Summit. I'd like to move all 29 items for your consideration.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to quick point out on number 14, that we held this over one council cycle, and we were able to reduce the agreement's amount by almost $230,000. So that was an exciting win out of this, and I just want to thank Councilmember Quincy and Councilmember Glidden as well for their help with this one.
Any further discussion on the Ways and Means Report? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to put a comment out there for item number 20. I'm very supportive of it. In fact, I'm really excited about the body cameras being tested in this situation. It's my understanding that with the two companies, Taser International and ViView, for ViView, my understanding is that they have one model that is going to be a body model, and for Taser International, they have several models that we will be testing. And, you know, of that, they're going to happen in three precincts, and one of the precincts is the fourth precinct. And, you know, looking forward to the results of that, you know, wanting to see great results from this and that we will implement in the future. But this testing period will really give us a good sense of how they do, and so I'm really excited about this and very supportive of this.
Any further discussion on the Ways and Means Report? Seeing none, I want to thank the Ways and Means Committee for negotiating, as Councilmember Andrew Johnson said, the price tag for what is really a first thing in our city, you know, our cameras that we have monitoring public spaces have typically been on our equipment, our poles, that kind of thing. And as we work to increase the camera surveillance in North Minneapolis in particular, we found that we needed to go to some of the Excel poles. And so I want to thank them for, Excel for expediting what could be a long legal process to get this agreement in place so that we can get these cameras up and helping contribute to public safety, particularly in North Minneapolis. Clerk call the roll on the Ways and Means Report.
Aye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Report with that committee's chair, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two items. For item number one, I have a substitute motion that is in front of everyone in the packets. So I'll start with item number two, which is passage of a resolution that designates 1729 Morgan Avenue South as an historic resource. This was a designation brought forward by the property owner, and so I'll move item number two, and then return back to item number one.
Okay. Councilmember Bender has moved item two on the zoning and planning report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are twelve ayes.
That item is adopted. On item one.
Thank you, Madam President. For item number one, this is regarding farm stand regulations, passage of ordinances amending Title 20 of our code, which would move farm stands from a use that requires a permit to an accessory use, and the substitute motion is in front of you. I'd like to speak to that briefly. So this substitute motion returns back to the original proposal, which adds community garden back in to this change, which would mean that both community gardens and market gardens are allowed to have farm stands as accessory uses. And it does, this substitute motion does include an amendment that had come through the committee with support that extended the hours to sunset. The reason I'm moving this forward is that I think, you know, community gardens are defined in the code as places where, you know, I can read the actual text instead of ad-libbing it, "A group of individuals," it's a use in which land managed by a group of individuals is used to grow food or ornamental crops for donation or for use by those cultivating the land in their households. Community gardens may be divided into separate plots for cultivation by one or more individuals, or may be farmed collectively by members of the group, and may include common areas maintained and used by group members. And so the intention for community guards to be included, gardens to be included here is really to allow community gardens to sell any extra produce that they may grow during the growing season at a farm stand, along with the way we are allowing market gardens to do so. Councilmember Andrew Johnson had found that our previous ordinance was, violated the state constitution, which does not allow us to charge a fee for folks to grow food, so people can, to sell food. So folks can today grow and sell the food that they are growing in their community gardens and market gardens. So that's why I'm moving forward the substitute motion today.
Any further discussion on the item one as substitute? Well, I think we probably have to have a vote to substitute. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. I wasn't sure if the Chair could just move the substitute or not, so I'm happy to speak in favor of the substitute, and I will be voting to substitute. I know that we got around a lot on this, and I certainly want to speak for it. I think that we were looking at alternatives and we were looking at options, and I was thinking about, could I have done a better job with community engagement, and undoubtedly I could have, but I also think it's important for us to recognize that we've been working on this for a number of years, and this really started back in 2010, when the mayor, Ryback at that time, first started to engage the community, and well, how could we build a local foods movement? And there were two, maybe 300 people who got involved in that. They broke into subcommittees, and that's when we first started talking about market gardens and community gardens. We created a homegrown Minneapolis effort. They had open houses, more people talked, and people were very interested and excited about growing food locally in the city. We actually took that report then, and we went through a very elaborate planning process that involved the Planning Department. There was a steering committee, there were more community meetings in different parts of the city, and again, producing food locally and selling it food locally and farm stands came up, along with many other ideas, but were part of an urban ag policy plan that we approved. And we, when we approved that, and it was unanimous approval, we actually discussed this issue and about the sales and periodic sales and when, where to do it, and we talked about it. I will say that originally, the people wanted to be able to do it on an unlimited basis, maybe more in agreement with state statute that says if you grow food on your property, you can sell food on your property, and you don't need a license or a permit. We weren't thinking of that statute, obviously, because what we did was we decided to require a license. Through a series of compromises, the proposal that came before us at that time was to limit it to 25 days. We then compromised to limit it to 15 days, and at that time, I was willing to go along with the compromise, and I was willing to explain that to many of the people who wanted to start doing this and do it more as a win, because we approved the plan, and we were going to then study it. This is, I think, what we, what we said, those of us who were here at the time, and I realize it's only six of us who were there then, but we said, we'll study this for a year, and then we'll come back, and if it isn't created any problems or any issues, we'll look at expanding it. And not only have it, has we taken the time to look at it one year, we also studied it realizing our ordinance was unconstitutional, so instead of looking at it with a 15 limit that we were enforcing, we've actually looked at it with no limit, which has been confusing for the growers, but we haven't heard any complaints.
We don't want to keep the rows there.
We, well, we've heard one complaint, but not having to do with the sales. We've heard a complaint about the rows. But other than that, I, we haven't heard a complaint, so we took our time to review it, and we did a careful review, and we also, I have to say that every year, the Food Council and our effort has conducted community meetings, we've had open houses, and we've discussed that there as well. And we actually created a pretty incredible and unique food council that isn't just advocates on it. The food council is made up of people from a variety of sectors of the food industry, and also right at the table is our city staff. So everything that we get from the food council has been reviewed by CPAD staff, Health Department staff, including the Health Department that enforces our food code staff. So we looked at that, and it came forward. So I think that this has been vetted well, and I think what we're actually going to find is that this is the kind of thing that people welcome in their communities, just like they've welcomed the market gardens and the community gardens that have started. And when they see somebody who has a little table, because the sales could still go on, but now we're going to allow a sign, we're going to allow a table, and we're going to allow them to have a window when they can do their sales when their food's done. People are going to look at it, and even if they don't buy the food, they're, I think they're going to say, well, this is great, this is the kind of city that I want to live in. Look at that, there's fresh tomatoes that somebody's growing in my area that I can buy. This is wonderful. So I'll support this, and if what we're doing is moving to substitute, that was why I want to move to get the substitute before us, and we can discuss that more then if people would like.
Any further discussion on the motion to substitute? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. If that passes, it's in front of us. Any further discussion then on the motion, which is, has seven provisions here? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
No.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
No.
There are ten ayes and two nays.
That item is adopted. Next, we have resolutions, and the first is an honorary resolution, which we did before the council meeting, recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month and metastatic breast cancer awareness day in Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the honorary resolution designating October 23, 2014, as lights on after-school day in the city of Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the honorary resolution designating September 23, 2014, as lights on after-school day in the city of Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the restroom facilities resolution, passage of a resolution encouraging gender-neutral single-user restrooms in Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to be added as a author to this resolution, and thank them, bring it forward.
Okay. Councilmember Bender.
I would also like to be added as an author to this resolution.
Councilmember Yang.
Ditto. I'd like to be added as an author.
Any further discussion then on the restroom facilities resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the 2014 Fill the Boot Campaign Resolution. It's passes, passage of a resolution authorizing the firefighters employed by the city to participate in partnership between the International Association of Firefighters and the Muscular Dystrophy Association by soliciting for donations during the 2014 Fill the Boot Campaign. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We have honorary resolution, passage of a resolution recognizing Pancreatic Cancer Action Network. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We also have an honorary resolution designating September 26 through the 28, 2014, as Minnesota Orchestra Days in the city of Minneapolis, which we read before the meeting. Any discussion on that ordinary honorary resolution, excuse me? All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have payroll, motion by Councilmember Quincy, Chair of Ways and Means, that regular payrolls of city employees under council jurisdiction for the month of October 2014 be approved and ordered paid. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Under unfinished business, we have ordinance introduction pursuant to notice by Councilmember Andrew Johnson and Councilmember Frye to introduce the subject matter of ordinance amending the code relating to license and business regulation, courtesy benches for first reading and referral to Community Development Regulatory Services Committee, amending regulations on the number and implementation of courtesy benches. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Under ordinance introduction, we have pursuant to notice, Councilmember Bender introduces the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to streets and sidewalks, block events for the first reading and referral to transportation and public works, reforming and streamlining block event conditions and restrictions to increase permit attainability and compliance. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have under, under new business, a notice of intent, Councilmember Gordon gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the food code, administration and licensing, amending provisions related to short-term food permits. That notice is given. Councilmember Gordon also gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to health and sanitation, indoor smoking, adopting the Minnesota Clean Indoor Air Act, and broadening the regulation of electronic cigarettes and electronic delivery devices. That notice is given. Councilmember Gordon also gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the Mini Gasco franchise, repealing existing franchise ordinance for gas distribution system, and passing new franchise ordinance for gas distribution. That notice is given. Councilmember Gordon also gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to Northern State's Power Company, charge for use of streets, repealing existing franchise ordinance for electronic distributions, electric distribution system, and passing a new franchise ordinance for electric distribution. That notice is given. Next, we have announcements. Any announcements? Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I actually wanted to comment on the last two notices.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. I wanted to just kind of highlight that these are to set up a public hearing and possible approval for our new franchise agreements with our utility companies, in case anybody might have missed the subtlety of the notices. The, I am one of three council members who serve on Utilities Franchise Policy Work Group, and negotiations have been going on with utility companies. A lot of progress has been made towards developing these clean energy partnerships, which is also something that we'll be considering at the same time, because the franchise agreements are contingent on those. The utilities, which is something they really want to see if we can't get approval on early so that they have some time after approval till the end of the year to go through the other agencies, including the PUC, for review before December 31st. Realizing the timeline, we realized we should give notice now, and this, my intention is that when we do the formal subject introduction, we'll probably also set the public hearing at HECE for October 6th. Now, we can always continue a public hearing, and we can always do things if negotiations aren't on the same path that we think they are, and these will be two issues that are divided and heard separately. But I just wanted people to know that this is, this is that. Thanks.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to announce that tomorrow is one of my favorite events up in North Minneapolis, Open Streets or the Harvest Fest, and I think both are pretty much the same thing. You know, the beautiful thing about this event, outside of just, you know, bringing everyone out on the streets, is just that, you know, Council President Johnson and myself pretty much share the same party, because it's right at the border of Ward Four and Five, and, you know, if you have time, please come to the event. I think it's always a great event, and, you know, we would love to see people.
Lowry Avenue. Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention the Youth Summit on Restorative Justice that will be on Monday at North Regional Library from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM, and I really strongly encourage my colleagues to attend. The goal of this is to bring together all the different players in the restorative justice field with city leadership, with our partners from Minneapolis Public Schools, Park and Recreation Board, the county, and to really evaluate our justice system. We have some opportunities, and we want to get folks thinking about this and on the same page of how we can be more effective in terms of getting youth back onto the right track once they happen to go off of it, and to ultimately really be helping reduce crime that otherwise would be taking place in the future. And I think it's a really important conversation, and will also be something that we'll see some policy proposals before us as a result of it. So I hope you can attend, even if it's for part of it, and I would encourage anyone else hearing this to stop by. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that carries. Thank you all very much.
Oh, come and catch you.
Okay, okay. Good.